Yep. Okay, trustee Lucero, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. And now for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lucero. Do we have any citizens' input?
No, we don't.
No, we don't. Okay. Okay. Dr. Delatorre, do you have any presentations for us this evening?
I do. I think they just went blank on me. Is the first presentation relative to the year-round schedule?
Good evening, board of trustees, president of Dr. Delatorre. Yes, tonight we have, let me just share my screen with you. Can you see the presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
We are here to discuss our proposed calendar change to a year-round. Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one is likely to include short-term disruptions, with high student apticism, with some students considering that will be physically absent from our buildings. Building a calendar that plans for anticipated, anticipate scenes minimizes the disruption, short-term disruption instructional will likely need to be included in a calendar. Calendars must also consider how to adjust for learning loss as a result of the current instructional interruptions. The revisions also include substantial change management to the organization, but the school board requires immediate action. This is familiar to everybody, but as we know, COVID-19 school closures have caused a devastating impact on school achievement. This is what the research shows, and you can see that where we see them, where we're projected to lose the most is in math, a mathematical loss for our students as well in the reading, but declines are particularly stark in mathematics. So the TEA agency released some information about having the opportunity to change our calendars around to minimize, anticipate short-term disruptions. The calendar revisions would help minimize disruptions, address learning loss, and will require substantial change management. So our goal was to create a calendar that Exleta ISD can offer to be able to cope with COVID-19. The intercessional calendar provides flexibility to address learning loss. What would it look like? It would look with an earlier start date, longer breaks in between, built-in remote learning time. It would recommend six weeks of intercessional time in addition to the regular calendar breaks to either have remediation, acceleration, weather makeup days, or also bank up the days as we lose for COVID if we do have continuous spikes. An intercessional calendar includes longer breaks dispersed throughout the year that provide that flexibility. The positive points is, as we've been saying, it reminds, it allows us for remediation for during breaks through a school calendar that has been redesigned. To opposing a longer summer, we would add those breaks in the school year. So students not mastering the content could return for intercession for remediation. Teachers during that time had dedicated time just to focus on ensuring that students move towards mastery during the intercession breaks. The calendar would also spread out, reach into the summer, and minimize the summer slide. The intercessional calendar would also provide extra days or weeks in the event that we need to close again due to COVID, similar to bad weather dates. So here's the work we've done. Ever since May 12th, we sent you our first VC, informing you of the possibility of going to a proposed year-round calendar. We've developed task force with the representations from all across the divisions. We met with our DEIC and our parent PAC committee. We issued a survey to our DEIC and PAC members. Dr. Delatorre also met with the Solares Teacher Association and amongst other stakeholder groups. From May 26th, we've gathered all the feedback, developed solutions to address the change, and prepare for the 2021 school year. On June 17th, we take our calendars to the board of trustees for your approval. Here's what our survey revealed. After review, after surveying our DEIC and our PAC members, as you can see, eighty-two percent, let's start with our, with our DEIC, eighty-two percent support the instructional changes. Eighty percent of our PAC also supports the recommendation for the instructional calendar for the changes. This evening, we present you our plan, and we also present to you the calendar for the 2021 school year. The first day of school would be August 3rd. It would be similar to what we do now. We have Labor Day off in September. October would be our first intercession break. November's familiar to us with our Thanksgiving break. December for Christmas, and that would take us to January. February, March also includes an extra week for an intercession break. Takes us into April, May, and the last day of school would be June 4th. Any questions?
I just like, I have a few questions.
To sort of frame it for us, and that is, in May of 2020, when the commissioner disseminated information encouraging school districts to consider a year-round calendar, he calls it the intercessional calendar. He was aware of the progress that was or wasn't being made in school districts across Texas. It became apparent that many of our teachers were not adequately prepared to deliver instruction in an optimal, effective way during the spring. They did an outstanding job, but I think we can concede that it was foreign to many of them. Many of our students and their parents struggled with the online instruction, the distance learning platform, and so the learning loss has really been in place probably since the last week of March in our case, and it has continued, although the participation was very strong. But the reality is that it's so new, and many students simply could not adjust to it, parents could not adjust to it. And even though our teachers grew every week, those students who were most adversely impacted were tier-three students. Those are our students who are English learners, students with special needs, and students who are socio-economically disadvantaged, especially in our middle schools. When the commissioner became aware of that as a general theme across the state, he made learning loss a priority, because we have to be able to bifurcate this. We are not the experts when it comes to healthcare and the medical profession and what we should or shouldn't do relative to the health of our students. But he does understand that we are the education experts. And he started reaching out to all of us. He reached out to Brenda and I back, I believe, the second week of May and asked whether or not we thought we could implement an intercessional calendar that in effect has our students starting school on Monday, August 3rd, rather than Monday, August, or is it Monday, August 24th or the 26th? I know that we have forty-seven days between now and the 3rd, and we have right at about eighty days before we start school, if we start school when we normally start school. So our interest, of course, is, and if we look at it through the lens of educators, we want the kids back in school. But we're also aware of the fact that there is still a lot of anxiety in the community, and there are a lot of parents who are uncomfortable sending the students. There are students who still may be uncomfortable coming to school. And then a big piece of it is, where are our teachers relative to coming back to school? I can promise you that the work that we have been doing for the last month has positioned us to bring them back under even the safest circumstances. But even those circumstances will not guarantee that an adult or a student will not test positive for COVID, whether that happens after the 3rd or it happens after the 26th. Because there's too many things that happen when kids and faculty and staff are not with us in school. So from an educational standpoint, the primary goal is to mitigate the learning loss. Get them in earlier, create breaks during the year where we can strongly encourage parents and students whose children have fallen behind and who are performing below grade level or at grade level to try and accelerate and remediate their learning. And secondary is that if we need to make up school days, then theoretically, we could use the intercession dates that Dr. Chacon just described, the additional two weeks in October and the additional week in March to get those students back into an instructional program so we can keep working with them. Tonight has nothing to do with how we bring them back in August. We're going to have to have, I think, a very serious and lengthy conversation about how we bring them back in August, but we can't do that yet because there are two outstanding issues. One, the commissioner has not given us any direction relative to attendance and whether or not he's willing to waive the traditional attendance model that would require us to be held accountable for all instructional minutes that a student receives in our school district. So he hasn't said anything about that, and tied to that, of course, is the revenue. He hasn't discussed whether or not we would be held harmless. An ideal plan would be to take a look at the average ADA that we've secured over the last three years, apply it to it, apply it to our district this year, and continue to fund us in the way that he has funded us or the state has funded us the last three years. Without those unknowns, and that's on the education side, we don't know whether or not we can be aggressive, ambitious, and bold, because I can promise you, we cannot afford to lose revenue, given what's happening across the state relative to the economy and state revenue and collection of property taxes, et cetera. The second piece of information that we haven't got any clarity on is where we are relative to COVID-19. I've read on numerous occasions that at times it appears that the El Paso region is not making the progress that other regions and other states are making. And so to come out and say, effective August 3rd, we'd like all of our students to return to a traditional instructional model would be a little reckless and irresponsible, because we have no idea what our world will look like in late July or early August. What we do have to be prepared to implement is a system that's entirely driven by online learning. That's something that we're familiar with. We just went through about two, two and a half months worth of that. We have to have an option that has been referred to as a hybrid option, where some students return, other students have the option of staying home. And then, of course, if things went incredibly well and you all felt comfortable, and the state and the county officials felt comfortable, we could, I guess, theoretically come back to school in a traditional model. We receive resources from the state to purchase masks, shields, thermometers. We have everything in place to do that. But ultimately, it's, it's the politics in the area and the sentiments in the area that will have to drive our willingness to expose ourselves as a district and ultimately possibly be criticized for being too aggressive and too ambitious and coming back too soon. So tonight, it's really just about, do we want to move forward with this August 3rd, which is great for education? Is it great for COVID-19? I'm not sure. I mean, the safe thing would be obviously to say, you know what? We've always started later than everybody else. That gives us an additional three weeks to kind of see what's happening, make adjustments, amend, modify, bring kids back. But there's no guarantee that they wouldn't be coming back anyway in a distance learning platform or a hybrid platform. So there are a lot of moving pieces, but I think what the team has done, all of them. We've looked at the schedule. The schedule that we're asking you to consider is solid. Many of us, as I've mentioned before, worked under that very same schedule when we were on the dark side. Let me, for, just for the record, that would be the Socorro Independent School District. And so it's not foreign to us, and honestly, I think the biggest benefit is if teachers are doing their job, if they're putting a hundred and ten percent into their work every day, they really do benefit from about a two-week break in October, refresh, re-energize, come back and hit it hard again. Another break in December, well, another break in November for Thanksgiving, another break in December, two weeks off in March, and it allows them the kind of an opportunity to step back, get some rest, clear their head, and then come back in, and they start looking at it in many ways the way we look at a football game. First quarter, second quarter, third quarter, fourth quarter, nine-week quarters. Every quarter comes with intercession, with remediation, with acceleration, and it comes with data. And that data tells them what has to happen in the second quarter or the next nine weeks. They retreat again, they go back, they look, they bring those students back into the school that are struggling, who have fallen below grade level or far below grade level, and they work exclusively and intimately with those students to try to get them back up closer to where their peers are at, and they go another nine weeks. So from an instructional standpoint, from an educational lens, it's a great, great calendar. What it will do for COVID-19, I have no idea. Questions?
Mr. Ochoa and Dr. Delatorre. My question is more on the aspect of the teachers' contracts and how that they start, what time they start and what time they end. Will there be overlap in their current new contract? And if there is overlap, how do we take care of that? I mean, if they deserve to be paid for the rest of the year, and I don't know. Is my question making sense?
It does. As a matter of fact, we've built in a closed session at the end of tonight's meeting to talk about some implications of going year-round, and Mr. Safi will be with us and Susan will be with us. And one of the issues that we need to talk about mirrors exactly what you described. And that is, how do we honor the ten-month contract that they sign for the 2019-20 school year without encumbering the new contract, which starts July 1st for the 2021 school year? I believe we have the answer to that, but the other conversation is around, can you do that? And so this evening, both Susan Austin and Safi are going to give you some information. Now, dozens of school districts have already decided to move to this calendar, and so I don't know whether or not they were too ambitious, but we're going to have a good conversation tonight about what that would look like relative to our contractual language and what our employees need and deserve.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Mike or Shane? Is it Shane? Usually, usually on rookie night, we don't let. I can't hear him.
Yeah, he froze, and I'm trying to unmute Mike.
It's my birthday, though.
Oh, there he is.
So is it Mike or Shane trying to talk?
It, it's my birthday, though.
It's Shane. It's his birthday.
Am I, am I? Oh, it's Shane.
Let's put him under Mr. Rosales on. We can get Shane on.
We're trying to unmute Mr. Rosales.
On, on, uh, five, six, I can't hear him. If I can pull up slide six.
Slide six.
Something happened.
Is that Shane?
We have Mike unmuted.
Okay, Mr. Rosales, go ahead and stay.
Just to clear my, my mind, Dr. Delatorre, what you're, what you're in reviewing, what you just said, our school year, and you're asking the board to consider starting 3rd of August and terminating or finishing the year June 4th. And so once, once the board elects to do that, then the questions, the major question I have, of course, is the possibility of this COVID reigniting in this community. And I, I, I'm very fearful, like so many of us, that we might, we might, we may not have a resurgence of it, but how would that, would, would we have enough leverage to pull our students off campus if this thing was to get, you know, to the point where it sits out of hand? Do we have any, any kind of elasticity to this approach?
Right now, and it's very preliminary, if, well, first of all, every student and every adult has to be tested every morning before they arrive at school. That means before children get on the bus, we take their temperature. Anybody with a fever can't get on the bus, they remain home. And then we've made, I think, a modest investment in making sure that we have all of the equipment, the thermometers, all of that at each and every one of the schools that we operate. And students cannot enter the school, cannot enter the school without having their temperature taken. As they enter, then, of course, they have to have face masks on. And a lot of those details are exactly what the senior-level administrators have been working on. Now, the big question is, and the big debate is in Austin. It used to be standard operating procedure that if even one student or one adult tested positive for COVID, you had to shut down the entire school for that fourteen-day quarantine. They are retreating from that somewhat, although no final decision has been made that if you can identify the student or the adult, and those people who have had proximity with that individual, only that individual and those peers or others would have to remain home for fourteen days. The rest of the school population, both student and adult, could continue forward.
Dr. Delatorre, could, could you all, or maybe Brenda can do this, Dr. Chacon, kind of give an idea, you alluded to some of it, but how to a typical school day would look for, like, let's say, for example, we choose the hybrid. You said something about they'll check the temperature as they get on the bus before they enter the school. Will they be wearing a mask all day? Will they have, will they have desk dividers, those type of things? What, what will the school, what will it look like for a child?
And again, and I'd love to sit and talk to you all about that, but one of the warnings I got was that this agenda item doesn't speak to the how. It's limited to whether or not we're willing to adopt the year-round calendar or not. I suspect that it will be the same whether it's year-round or whether it's the traditional calendar. But we can go into great detail as to, not just what we're doing, but by now, every and any good idea throughout the country has already been put out there. We've got some school districts, for example, who have decided to leave the high school students at home, some of the middle school students at home, and they want the elementary school students to go to the high school campus because it's so much larger that you can create that social distance and have entire grade levels isolated away from everyone else, but you can only do that on a large high school campus. You have some that are asking the tier-three students. Those are the students that are suffering the most academically to come back to school face-to-face in a very small and intimate environment. But if you're tier-two or tier-one and you are meeting, mastering, exceeding the standards, they're asking you to stay home. I can see it creating some resentment from some parents who think that, hey, look, I know my child is a high-performing student. High-performing student, why would he have to stay home? And, and why are you giving what we've all said is the best form of instruction face-to-face to a select group of students? And a good example of that is, SISD just said, we're coming back, and for the first three weeks, we're going to do distance learning. You know what that is? That's kicking the can down the road. That's a punt. Anyone can do that. I could come out and say, hey, we've made a decision. We're going to do distance learning for all students beginning August 3rd or beginning August 26th, and that will go until further notice, and that means it can go until we all feel absolutely safe. The problem, I think, in their message is, at some point, twenty-five percent of the students will come back. Well, which twenty-five? How will they decide which twenty-five percent of the students get to come back to school? And then who gets to be part of the fifty percent of the students that come back to school? This isn't a bar. You can't just walk in and they tell you you have to go home if you exceed the fifty percent. So I don't think it's a good idea for us to be so definite right now. I think those are all interesting and innovative ways of doing it. I just think that we also need to be careful in terms of how the parents in the community may react. If we select one group of students over the other two groups to come back sooner in a face-to-face environment, because believe it or not, it doesn't matter what tier they're in, one, two, or three, you have parents out there who want their children back in school. Even the honor roll kid. Get him out of my house, right? And so that, like I said, it's, it's not for this agenda, but it's something that before we make any decision on that, all of you, beginning with the president and the rest of the trustees, are going to have our manual as to what we plan to do in the fall. And you'll have it long before the end of July so that you can give us your feedback, you can share it with people, and we can decide whether or not we're being too aggressive or not aggressive enough. And the easy one, of course, is, don't be aggressive at all. Put everybody back on online learning, and then the burden falls directly on our teachers, our principals, and our staff. And the learning and the quality of learning is probably not what we would want for our own children. Yes, Bill?
Yes.
About my meeting?
Thank you, President Ochoa. Dr. Delatorre, I've been reading an awful lot about your peers around the state, particularly out in East Texas, and quite honestly, the more, the wealthier districts who have, have come out basically against the year-round, even though what, what the TEA recommendation is on, on calendar. Do you have a feel, I mean, the reasons they're giving doesn't make any sense. They talk about childcare and other things like that. But do you have a feel for why they're so against it?
I think they have to deal with size. So Dallas, Round Rock, McKinney, a lot of them that, where I've read as well, they've got large school districts. They also have a very diverse population in some cases. We don't. I like when people tell me, you work for a large, urban, diverse school district. We're not very diverse. Nine out of every ten kids is Latino. It's about the same for our teachers. Ninety percent are Christian. I mean, we've got, I think, a like-minded community where we can really pick up their, their vibe very quickly. Talking to Mike Inahos, when Mike said, I have no interest in it, he did say, I have no interest in it this year. He said, because I don't know that August 3rd is going to be any safer than August 24th. He said, and so if we're doing it as a way to mitigate COVID-19, he doesn't think three weeks, these are my words, not his, he doesn't think three weeks are going to make all that much of a difference. But in an organization like Dallas ISD, it's so large, and there are some challenges. And Lindley, Bobby, Brenda, all of them will tell you. One thing is getting the school up and running. You've got to take care of transportation, child nutritional services. You've got to take care of transportation, child nutritional services, maintenance and operation. Keep in mind that if your kids are in school longer during the school year, there's less time in the summer to address all of the needs we have out there. So this is a very complex and complicated process. But I'm thinking that that's one reason. Here's the other reason, that I think a lot of those superintendents are not playing ball with Commissioner Murat. They're pissed. They're really, really irritated that the state took our federal money that we could have used to do some great things with our distance learning program. And they're going to take that money, and they tried to placate us by buying us thermometers, masks, gloves, and shields. I can promise you, did not take up the $14 million that we were supposed to get from the federal government to support our school district. And then they found out that TEA is going to take that money and develop a distance learning curriculum. So that, in effect, the state would determine your curriculum by grade level, content area, scope, and sequence. And it won't be long before they're selling it to us. Because the next step is, they'll develop their assessments based on their curriculum. And we may be silly, but we're not dumb. And so, a lot of these Dallas-Fort Worth area superintendents, Austin, Houston, maybe even San Antonio, kind of just followed the dots. They followed the money and they saw kind of where it was going. And they are not, they're not fans right now of TEA and Commissioner Murat.
I have just a couple of comments, President Ochoa, with your permission. The, the, back to the calendar, I just like to make a comment. I am in the healthcare field. We've been back since May 18th. I'm going to tell you, my employer, the college, has done an excellent job putting things together. And we work hard at ensuring the safety of our students and our staff. But I just spent four and a half days in self-quarantine because we thought we had a positive case. And let me tell you, that's an interesting feeling. I had not been scared during this. And I was scared for my family. I was scared whether I needed to go sleep somewhere else, whether I needed to be around my family until we got the results back. Thankfully, it was just a scare and not anything else. I'm not sure how we do this. Today, I visited with, I had a doctor's appointment, and I was visiting with the staff there. They have two of their children, my, the medical assistant had two of her children in our school, in one of our schools, and how scared she is and those sort of things. And so, I think that, to go back to trustee Lucetto's comment, you know, the uncertainty is just, that is the biggest fear. You know, and like I said, sitting in my house for four days, waiting to find out whether I had to go do something or wonder whether I was going to be sick or get my family sick, it's just a, it's a humbling moment. And I had not felt that during this entire time. I would like to say on the calendar that I have not heard, I've heard a few comments or concerns, but I have not heard anybody come out. And I would hope that if the public or our parents, you know, interested citizens, now's the time for them to say something, you know, quickly. Because this is on the agenda for Wednesday night. The other, the other part of this is that I would strongly encourage, as President Ochoa and fellow trustees, that we probably need to have a July meeting, okay? I think we need to get out, we need to get the word out, and they need to hear it from us, and they need to hear us, where we stand on things. And this is not politics as usual, okay? This is us just being, helping deal with the uncertainty, okay? And by the way, the district has been good at trying to address that. And so, this is not because of a shortcoming. This is just because, that's, I think, our job. And so, I would strongly encourage at one, maybe two meetings before the, if we elect to go with the new calendar, before the August 3rd. And they may be, it's be workshops, they may be updates. It just depends on what the, the, the calendar or what the needs are out there. At some point, President Ochoa, I don't know how we do this, so that we stay within the law. We'd have to probably work with Mr. Safia and Ms. Austin. I would like for us to, as a board or as trustees, to come out with a proclamation, talking about all these things, to include funding, to include ADA, to include the federal money, because the feds are getting ready to do another round of funding. And I don't, the state, I understand the state has issues, but that's our money. That's our kids' money. That's, you know, that's the future's money. And they don't have a right to take that away from us. And so, and then also, too, I'd like for us to have a strong discussion. And I was very pleased to see a representative, I wish I could remember from what district, who was recommended that we talk about testing in the spring. And the fact that these are hard times, these are hard issues. And so, at some point, I'd like for us to do that. I'd like us to come out with a proclamation, President Ochoa, that the other trustees are supportive of it, so that we can address those things. And so, I think that that's, that's important. Again, I understand from Dr. Chacon that they did a, they checked social media. Dr. La Torre did a video. We've had some response from social media in general, it's been well-received. But again, I would strongly encourage our community and our teachers, all our teachers, to come out and tell us how they feel about things, because this is important. Thank you.
Mr. Ochoa, I've got a couple of questions.
Mr. Bustillos, is that Mr. Bustillos, or who was that?
That's Shane.
Shane, okay.
Yes. On that, on that slide six, it talked about teachers having dedicated time for struggling students. And then I've got some follow-up questions regarding the struggling students. How does going to year-round school create dedicated time for struggling students?
Well, typically, what you'd have, Shane, is at the end of the nine weeks, the teachers have gotten to know their student, and they've identified those students that are in tier-one. Those are high-performing students. Tier-two students are either approaching grade level or meeting grade level. And then they've got a percent of students in their class that are below grade level. Those students would be the students that we would reach out to the parent and say, I know that you have two weeks off coming up in October, but we would really encourage you to consider allowing us to keep that group of students in school during that two-week intercession, so that we can do two things. One is, we can first open it to teachers. But the only teachers we hired when I was in Sapporo were teachers who demonstrated during the nine-week period and prior to the nine-week period that they could reach some of the most, some of the students with the biggest challenges. It isn't, it isn't a way for teachers need to make a little extra money to come back and work those two weeks because they need to pay off a credit card. There are two pieces to it. The first piece is, the only teachers that we entertain coming back during that two-week period are teachers who are committed and who have a history of moving the academic needle for the neediest students. In Sapporo, my experience was, and Brenda can speak to this, parents of those students oftentimes are working not just one job, but two jobs. They don't get time off in October, they don't get time off in March. So you're really giving them some additional daycare, but it's structured and it's a formal education program where those kids get to come back into a classroom with fewer numbers, and they get individual attention. And they're all tier-three students. They're not the whole gamut. That's the way we used the program in Sapporo.
So I certainly appreciate what you're saying, and thank you for that. But if a student, a tier-three student is constantly mediated, are we going to put any safeguards, or what are we going to do? If this COVID thing says anything, it's to look more at mental health. What are we going to do to make sure that these students also have that break, that mental break that they need? So that way, rejuvenate and come back fresh, just like we're asking everyone else to do.
We're not. We're not, because oftentimes, I think that the pressure that these students feel is because oftentimes, they're struggling in school academically. I think it puts a lot of weight on them. The whole socio-emotional learning, all of that, it's important. But we have to decide, I think, as a school system, is that the priority? Is that why we exist? Or is the priority putting them in an environment? And there are counselors at the school. There are still resources at the school, even for that two-week period. But I can tell you, from my experience, that if a student keeps to slide backwards academically, those socio-emotional learning issues and struggles that oftentimes come from what happens at home will continue to exacerbate because they don't feel successful in school. And I also believe that because of the, the smaller intimate class makeup and the fact that you've got a teacher who's got a proven track record and is still willing to give up at least a week of the two-week vacation they get, that that person really genuinely cares about those kids. Because I think, to your point, those teachers that are having success with the neediest students, it isn't just because they're academically strong. It's because something about their disposition, and I have to believe it's because they care, and they take these kids under their wing, and they treat them like they're their own, really gives the child the confidence that they need to perform better than they even thought possible, against all of the odds that they face when they leave our school. So I don't think it's a bad thing for that. But I do, I do recognize that what you're saying is, there are children out there who are overwhelmed with a lot of pressure. How does bringing them back to school for a week or a week and a half, two weeks, how does it help? I think in many cases, they get to spend two weeks with someone who really cares about them. And in some cases, some of these kids would be going home to an environment where for those two weeks, they're kind of on their own, just trying to get by because parents or parent still has to work. Or in some cases, they're given the burden of taking care of smaller children at the house or elderly relatives, like grandparents, aunts and uncles, and things like that. I mean, but you're right, it's a societal issue, it's a societal question.
But also, Dr. La Torre, if we're making this decision due to COVID, and I think it's a great idea, I mean, we know that our kids are going to go in at a deficit because of what happened this school year. But if we're doing the school, the calendar change because of COVID, and then we're going to bring in kiddos and teachers during the intercession, we're supposed to be kind of, you know, giving, giving the community a break, giving the students a break as far as contact. It kind of, it's kind of contradicts the reason for what we're doing. And you know, I'm all about learning, but...
No, let me be clear. That's why I said that at the beginning. We're not doing it for the COVID. We're doing it for learning loss, because we're not expert on COVID, right? They're the ones that brought in that, and if, in fact, you know, you need to bring students back because, like in the COVID, you could use that time. I think, and I know some people may disagree with this, I think, people should stay in their lane. I am not going to refute or push back against the medical community. I'm not an expert in the medical community. If you ask me whether or not intercession is good academically, our answer is yes. And our decision to move to that calendar for all of us, I think, should really be about teaching and learning. I think we should stay in our lane. When it comes to COVID, and I think, whether it's Mike Murat or someone else that's also saying, oh, and by the way, that would be great in the event that you had to close the school. You could always use the intercessional days. Okay, that's great. But we, we're responsible for their education and their safety. We're doing it because our kids have been out of school since March 22nd. And they'll be out of school all the way to August 24th. And we believe that it's going to take a long time to make up what amounts to almost half a year of learning loss, especially for our neediest students. If COVID surfaces, because we really don't have any latitude. We have to do and adhere to whatever the county and the state tell us we can do. If it surfaces and those kids are pulled from a school for 14 days, and it just so happens that they can come back and spend 10 days with us during intercession, that works. But our, I think our number-one reason for doing it has to be because we've told our community, we've told their parents, we've told our students, we're going to educate your children.
That makes a big difference in the, I, in the messaging and just in the total process, because what, from what I understood initially, this was brought up because we were, we needed, we want to make sure that, say, we have some cushions in there in case there is an outbreak. The kids won't, there won't be as much inconsistency in the school year. But now we understand the focus is only about education. It's almost as if COVID is not the factor at all here. Then, then I would, I would, then why wouldn't we have done this? If it's proven a better method academically, the only reason we're doing it, you're saying, is because they missed, some kids missed out as far as having total access to education during the, during the last three years.
And the reason we didn't do it is because it's against the law.
And now the law is, now we have that leeway?
Well, yeah, that's what I think Susan and Mr. Safia are going to talk to you about. So TEA has said, start it. Get this thing going, because they're looking at it from an educational lens. But if you look at the, the ed code hasn't changed. The ed code still says you can't start school until August 24th. Right? Now, if somebody grieves that, guess who they go to?
TA? Yeah.
They go back to the commissioner. He has the ultimate authority in that. So that's, that's kind of what we're going to talk about at the end, because it is a little convoluted in that he has said, do this, do this, do this. And then our people, Mr. Safia and Susan, said, that's great that he did that. But shouldn't the legislature have changed a lot of, given permission to do that? Why is he operating unilaterally? Then somebody mentioned, he's not, because under an emergency crises, he's given certain latitude, and he's just taking that latitude. So that's kind of what we're going to talk about at the end, because so many districts have already said, we're on board. But for us, and it is COVID, right? The reason that we missed, the reason that kids missed six months of school is COVID-related. But I wouldn't say that we're adopting that in anticipation of future COVID cases. I'd say we're trying to mitigate something, a harm that was done to our kids back in March and April by bringing them in earlier. And I think that's why Mike Murat has also said, and at any time that the board decides you want to go back to the traditional calendar, you can do that.
Okay.
Dr. La Torre, it's Bobby, President Ochoa. May I, may I add something very quickly on Mr. Hagerty's viewpoint? You brought up Mr. Hagerty in regards to counseling for children and how they may need to stay home to get a break from the instruction. One thing that we utilize summer school for is also for other things outside of academics. Sometimes we use them for culinary purposes, we use them for different things. And so, it could be an ideal way for us to have our counselors come in and just work with those small group of students that are emotionally having difficulty, so that they can, they can persevere in this environment, because we know that it's negatively impacting them, without a doubt. And so, it doesn't always have to be academics when we bring them in through intercession, but it can also be an opportunity for us to work with them one-on-one or three or four at a time to get them acclimated to the new, our new normal.
Thank you.
You also will bring them in for enrichment, too. I mean, we're talking a lot about the learning loss, but we will have opportunities to bring them in for those enrichments, for those students who are excelling. But we can also make sure that they continue growing. And one area is our tier-three, but we'll also continue the enrichment, too, such as our summer camps and things like that. That would just kind of, we would kind of paradigm shift and do it over intercessions as well.
All right, let me say something. I've been hearing everybody speak, and let me make this, what I took from this is that we're making this recommendation based on academic reasons, because, and I understand, I'm the teacher, too. I understand that we weren't reaching out to the kids as effectively they had been in the classroom. And, and from January, what was it, March 13th all the way to, to August 24th? That's a long period of time where not be any kind of instruction. Instruction. So we're doing this to kind of help them come up to speed as to what they've missed so far and to make sure that they get that strong foundation. Whether, whatever it is, next year, I mean, if they come up with a vaccine or anything, we might come back to them. Whether whatever it is next year, I mean, if they come up with a vaccine or anything, we might come back to normal. And we have that option of going back to the traditional schedule come at the end of of this twenty 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 one school year. Uh, I just want to make sure that that is something I can tell the parents uh that that is still, this isn't, this isn't going to be uh year after year. It's something that we're going to look at at the end of this epidemic year so we can make that assessment and go back to the traditional event warrants that. And at that time, I think we would need to have a lot of feedback, especially from parents or teachers in our community. And uh I think that would be a good move on our part at the end of this school coming up to coming school year.
Yeah, I agree with all that. The only thing I would add, Cruz, is that um if you see a significant improvement in academic achievement of students, given our role and our responsibility, it makes what parents and the community think a lot less important if all of a sudden you have students performing at a much higher rate. If conversely, we find out that at the end of a year or two years of year round, we're performing right where we perform now, then I would say, yeah, let's go back to them and say, which one would you rather, which one would you rather have? But if our goal is high academic achievement and college career readiness and you see that that academic needle jump up ten percent, twelve percent quickly, I think it would be a disservice to ever go back just because some people don't like it if in fact it's having the result that you all want.
Well, I know, I think it's all based on the data that we will
Yes, yes.
Our preference as far as why we would like that, it's all driven by the data and if student performance is really, you can show that big difference, I think. I, as a parent, would say, yes, that is a good deal.
Well, you have children in the school system, Catherine does, Charlie does, think about it.
Oh, yeah. We
Where are you at?
Pardon?
I was asking Charlie where he and his family's at with it in terms of, and then Kath.
Well, I'm I'm for it. I'm for the academic year round calendar. Um, talked to my wife, she's a teacher. Um, she also expressed a lot of what we've talked about is uh closing that gap. Um, she seems like with this year, this traditional calendar, um, it's drilling kill, what she says, uh, when she's bringing back the kids from summer. And they're having to work harder, uh, our teachers are having to work a lot harder uh to try to get the kids up to speed and then try to get into into a rhythm of of what they're doing throughout the school year. Uh, not only my wife, but I've talked to other of her colleagues that are teachers and they seem all to be favoring the year round. Um, my question to you, Dr. Delatorre, in your, in your experience, going year round, how, how is that going to affect our scores? Do you think we are gonna have better scores? Is that what you're seeing more? In your experience, what you've seen, do you think will definitely go up?
I do. I've always felt that the one advantage um that SISD has had over us. And and we've been able to overcome it and we've competed with them. Uh, we're still the highest performing district on end of year exams. We do better with EL students, special ed students. Um, I can't understand how they given their demographic and their demographic is improving year after year, all you have to do is drive up the three sixty five or East Lake or Pebble Hills, they're getting all of these young, educated families with baccalaureates buying their first home. New schools because it's a, it's a a new school district. And yet, they're they're competing with basically an inner city school district who has made its reputation on its teachers. The biggest difference that I see is how hard our teachers work to not leave any child behind. And it's hard, hard work. And and they were doing it prior to all of you joining the district. They were doing it in old, dilapidated, broken down buildings with not the best technology. Now we've got that in place. If we go toe to toe and not that outperforming Socorro is our priority and we both have the same two week period here, three week period here, two week period here, then all of a sudden, it's it's all about what are we doing during that two week period in October that they're not? What are we doing in that two week period in March that they're not? And you know what? They've written off summer school. We have much shorter summer school, but we're gonna have a summer school. As long as everybody gets excited about it, and that's why it was so important to have the surveys because if the majority of teachers or the association were opposed to it, it wouldn't make any difference. But if they're genuinely excited about it, I think it's gonna go like this. We've been like this. I think you're gonna see one of these. Maybe not this next year because we have a year where we have to make up for that half year learning loss. But once we get back to normal, forget about it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Rosales.
Very quick question. Dr. Delatorre, is there a big difference cost wise in going to the year round uh mode as opposed to what we have? Is there any cost saving or additional cost?
Yeah, there are. There are some savings and then there are some expenses. So for example, you save money on vandalism and theft. Because you have kids in school for a longer period of time over the course of the school year. Um, and it's harder to get to the school and, I mean, think about it. If if you're out there and you're bored in our school district, you have from uh theoretically June eighth all the way to August twenty fourth to wander around aimlessly at night and find dumb things to do at the campuses. Uh, it does present some challenges, transportation challenges. Um, we're gonna pay teachers to work during the intercession, so that's an additional cost. Uh, maintenance and operations, this is tricky because the kids are there well into the summer and they start sooner in the summer, so we have less time to do some of the maintenance and operations that we would normally do. So we have to bring people in on weekends and evenings to handle some of that. I believe, Lindley, are you with me?
Yes, sir.
Will you run him through some of the the pros and the cons of the year round calendar?
Sure. From a cost and a savings perspective, there are several factors and let me just kind of go through a few that we've looked at. So some of the savings, as Dr. Delatorre mentioned, are vandalism and things like that because the campuses are occupied and anytime a building is occupied, you have less chance of it being vandalized. Um, there are some opportunities for um savings in the areas of avoided cost, if you will. So there may be extra site operation. We don't have to operate as many sites because because right now we're already consolidating, but if we are staffing and utilizing the sites appropriately, we can continue to right size the district. So that's something that of course we want to look at. We have um furniture supplies and equipment, utilities and maintenance, all those things can be shared among the various groups and grade levels. So we shouldn't see additional cost there. Right now, we operate summer school for three weeks. We estimate about two million dollars a year for the summer school cost. If we are doing two weeks of intercession, there may be a week of savings in there. It just kind of depends on how the um, how COVID does affect us next year. And then some of the additional costs we may see, as Dr. Delatorre mentioned, the maintenance that's required if we have to work at night or on weekends, there may be some overtime in there. Um, typically, we need, we have that three months and anything that's more than fifteen to twenty days is gonna be difficult to complete during regular time. There are some scheduling and costs that may be associated with athletics and UIL activities because we have to reschedule some of those or adjust schedules. So transportation and um cost associated with that may increase. We have, obviously, if we start August third, it's going to be hot. And we already know that not all of our facilities will have refrigerated air by then. So we have in anticipation started looking at more of the portable, what we call R two D two units because those are easy to move around and we can focus them where it's most heated. But that's a cost. Um, there will probably be some associated transition cost as we update calendars, update paper things, um, publish more, do some outreach, things like that that may be associated with it. When we looked at electricity to start three weeks earlier because we anticipate a higher cost for those utilities in the hot summer months, we're probably talking about thirty thousand dollars in um early startup for electricity. If during intercession, we operate um that week at every single campus, we would have increased costs. But one way to offset that is to select special campuses. So instead of every campus being open in the Del Valle learning community, we would instead use perhaps the combo school, the Del Valle Middle and Mission Valley Elementary for those intercessions and that would help us offset some of those. So we've done a lot of background work, looking at the potential costs, the transitions, the things like that that may um affect us. And then how can we offset it and balance it out so that we mitigate any impacts?
Pretty good. Thank you.
Yep. President Ochoa? I have another question.
Yes, sir.
I'm I'm still going back to the students and I'm still thinking if we if we switch over to this uh calendar, we still start in August and we still have star and EOC testing in April. We're gonna lose those two weeks in October, we're gonna lose those two weeks in March. So in effect, aren't we taking away a month worth of testing time? Of teaching time for the test? Once the test is given, I know that's where teachers tend to get into different, different things, but they're not teaching and preparing the kids for the test until the beginning of that next school year again. So are we cutting out that month's worth of of teaching time for these tests?
I think it's actually on the contrary. If we're bringing in the students that need uh the most support in October, you also bring in the students that need the most support in March. And the minute they come back from March, I know in the past, they started their testing within a week or two weeks. So they were really getting them ready for the testing during that two week period in March. Now, what they've done is they've taken the testing and they moved it uh out a little further. Um, but the idea of of them losing instruction would really depend on just those students who didn't want to participate in the intercession. Now, I know that Arlington, and this is something for y'all to keep in mind, Arlington has already passed a resolution that they will not participate in state mandated testing at the end of this school year. And I know that it's getting a lot of attention from um other surrounding school districts because of the because of the CARES Act money that was taken from them, because they're not getting any direction from the state, because they don't feel like they're getting any leadership from TEA. They have just simply decided in in the spirit of the Black Lives Matter protests that uh they would adopt a resolution saying even if you send the mandated tests, our students will not be participating. Now Shane, Shane makes a good point in that there, there has been historically um a trend that once the state mandates have been taken, that whatever happens from about, you know, the beginning of May to the end of the school year becomes very uh field trips, water parks, uh that type of thing. I don't know what we can do about that. But ultimately, it will come down to the quality of our intercessional programs. If we do a good job and we are inclusive and we can get as many students in there and we do a week and we do a full day during the week and maybe we do the second week, not the first week. I think that the student gets one week off to kind of get that um that break. And then the second week, they come back a week earlier than other students who may not be interested or whose parents may want to take them on vacation. It it really is just substituting summer school to some extent and making it more timely. Because if at the end of nine weeks, you recognize that a child has fallen behind, I think it's a lot easier to catch them up in October than to just say, we'll catch them up next year during summer school. I mean, it 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 certainly is not like something magical that nobody knows about. I mean, Socorro's been doing it for years. And as I just mentioned, if you don't do it right, you're you're still there second to SLED ISD. It's all about doing it right. And I, I promise you that, whether we go August third or we go August twenty fourth, we're gonna get after it. We're gonna be ready. The only thing that I think gives us a little bit of trepidation is knowing that they haven't been with us since March twenty second. That concerns me a little bit. And to Charlie's point, can you imagine being a teacher on the first day of school when a child comes back to you and they've had no real education for six months?
Dr. Delatorre, uh, I think that um, well, I that we're not going to, we're not making decisions on how the help, but I I do hope and and I'm going to assume that our parents um will have the opportunity to have the choice whether they're gonna, on August third, if that's what we decide, that they send, that there be the on the distance learning choice for those parents that do have that fear. I I I really want I I want that comfort level knowing that our parents that have that fear and have it it is, it's a real fear. I'll tell you, I've spoken to several parents and I just want to make sure that that we're offering that as as an option for the parents that need that.
It's entirely up to the board. If if that's what the board wants, then uh it it's what we did in April, in um March, April, they would uh stay home and go online. Here is the caveat. If we don't get revenue for them because they won't come to school, we'll still offer the online instruction, learning, but we'll take the hit financially. Unless TEA and and the governor, and I think they will, say, look, as long as you have them on some program and you can find a way to monitor the instructional minutes, you get credit for that child.
Any other discussion on this? Okay.
Has anyone met anybody that's absolutely opposed to it?
No.
What was your question?
I was just wondering, has anyone met anybody that's really strongly opposed to it? And I I'd be curious to know what we need to stall for. See, I don't thi- I don't think it's the calendar as much as what will the first day of school look like?
Yeah. It's the how.
And and to your point, the best way to do that is to say, how would you like it to look like? But here's a tricky thing. If they go online, exclusively online, they almost need to remain online for at least a semester. Because we're gonna have to adjust our staffing to say, you guys are best and our brightest in delivering online instruction and you're great with technology and you know how to do the presentations. So you're the FTE that's responsible for, I'll use Connie as an example. Uh, let's say they have eighteen hundred students at Bel Air High School and we find out that four hundred aren't coming back on August third and they're not coming back on August twenty sixth. For those four hundred students, we're gonna have to almost register them for online courses. And then the parents and the student has to, they have to understand. I moved staff out of the of the master schedule to accommodate the online. You gotta give us until at least the first semester's over. And then at that point, if you want to come back and go face to face because you feel more comfortable, we can do that. But you can't be at the end of December and go, you know what? I've noticed all my friends are fine and they're doing great and I I'm I'm done with online. I want to come back in the middle of the semester because then all of a sudden I gotta start pulling teachers back onto the campus. And it it can create and and convolute things. But but we'll have a plan because the best plan is have something for everybody.
Dr. Delatorre, but you're already, you're already doing that anyways. I mean, when kids show up, I mean, we register, we register students all the time and then make adjustments in the cat, in the schedule. Um, because we have too many kids now in the classroom or we we need more help. So we we do that already. So it's not, I I I don't see what the big deal is.
Oh, stop it. So the, the college is easier.
The the college is not, is not gonna reconvene in in face to face in the in the fall. They weren't made their announcement. No.
Oh.
The only, by the way, just for, again, uh, back to what Catherine was saying, um, we're gonna do everything online, but anything that's CTE related. Okay? Anything that's CTE related, anything that has to have a hands-on application, um, those things, we will find a way to do a hybrid. Um, but uh, Dr. Sadata has has made that announcement last week, so.
It's really the safest way to go.
Yeah.
Like I said, if if SISD said, hey, we're gonna start on Like I said, if if S I S D said, hey, we're going to start online and will remain online until further notice, like saying, log back on, start taking your courses and we'll let you know.
And I don't necessarily know if that's the right way or the wrong way. I just, I just believe that our parents, considering that we are in a pandemic, it hasn't practically even left, that we have to offer an option. And that's also to retain students. Because I really do, I do believe that there are several parents that that do have a fear sending their kids back to a classroom.
That there are. One in ten said they would consider homeschooling. So really, just all of us will be available to you. We'll send you some information. Later tonight, we'll talk about some weird legal things that Mr. Coffee and Susan have discovered. And then we'll talk about it on Wednesday and we are at your disposal. We can go August 3rd, we can go August 24th, 26th. We'll be ready to go.
Hey, thank you.
What's the next item on the agenda, President Cruz?
The next item on the agenda is V L K bond update presentation.
Good evening, President Atua, members of the board, Dr. Delatorre. It's my pleasure tonight to give you an update on the progress that we've made so far. Go ahead and share my screen. And everybody see that? Okay. It should go into. The, just a reminder, we had fourteen different bid packages that are going to affect thirty-one different campuses. We have a few sites that I've already started, so I'm going to start out of order just so we can show you the progress. So at Isleta High, both the softball and baseball field have been tore up and had base been over excavated. They've brought in the select fill and getting ready to put in the drainage material and turfing. And they started at Del Valle High this week. So what you'll see is the progress we have, we're in progress at Isleta and Del Valle. We'll be starting at Riverside. Riverside and Del Valle switched on the schedule because Mimosa and the streets around Riverside are under construction, so the trucks wouldn't have access. September, we'll be starting at Hank's, October Parkland, and then November Bel Air softball. So all of these will be done by February of twenty twenty-one. And of course, the first ones out will be done, you know, in within about ninety days of their their start date. Eastwood softball and Bel Air baseball, I have as to be determined, since we have construction going to occur on those sites, we haven't pinpointed the exact start and end dates for those. As we go on to Bel Air High School, you can see we've started Portable Village, so the old baseball field or the site of the baseball field has been asphalt paved. Over forty some odd portables have arrived on site. You know, we'll have all those in by mid next week. They'll start cabling. And with all the discussions y'all had earlier, the we've accelerated schedules. So both the, at Bel Air High School, the original end date for them was more towards, you know, August, mid-August. We've bumped it up to July 22nd, so we could have P A fire alarm and everything ready to go in all the portables for for the students. They will meet that deadline. So we, you know, the portable move is going faster than anticipated. So if school starts on the third and students are attending, those portables will be ready for them. So what we'll want to show you, the architect M and K has provided a couple of renderings as they've changed the the complete look of of the building. If you're looking on the left picture, view to the northwest, what you see on the left is the existing gym, you know, the new gym building and the on the, on the right, you see what it would look like as you approach going down south on Yarborough. So you can see they're tying in the new building to to match that modern gym facility. If you're looking at it aerially, so what you see on the left is you can see where the Health Professions is kind of that triangular building and you have the roof that you see in white. That's the most of the existing original building. That's all being demolished. The existing cafeteria, Bel Air is going to get a new cafeteria and the existing cafeteria is going to be remodeled. So that shell of a space will will remain, you know, and the facade will change. But what you're looking at on the right is you can see where in the gray area is the Health Professions magnet. What you can see is it looks like three separate buildings for the new campus. We'll have a great courtyard, very similar to the layout that we have at at Eastwood, where you have a great courtyard in between buildings. Moving along at Lancaster. Lancaster was another with with the foresight of the of the board and allowing us to take the agenda item in May as opposed to to June. The, they got a jump on it and what you see on the left is the roof. There are no E V A P units, they've all been removed. All the new roof curbs are waiting for the package of refrigerated air units. The rooms interior are getting new ceilings, new lights. They've already started painting. You see the floor being protected on the right. They too will be, all the classrooms will have refrigerated air before the start of school for that August 3rd date if students are are there. So shortening their their schedule by thirty days, Baines met the challenge and and we'll be ready. Capistrano, Capistrano is getting underway too. You'll have on the board agenda to award the first G M P. What we have, you know, the, we'll have a new admin area and security vestibule and they'll start remodeling all the, all the rooms, you know, new lights, ceilings, floors, paint, millwork, casework, sinks, you name it. It's broken down now into six phases. You can see the, in anticipation, the district contractor has already abated most of the campus. So as the students return, although the much has been, the casework has been removed, the contractor is going to go in and put that first coat of paint in all those rooms. So you can see there's a hodgepodge of of colors. Some of the rooms have turquoise color, some, you know, just over the years, whatever was painted, they'll get a fresh coat of paint before school starts. And that first phase that you see is fifteen classrooms. So that fifteen classrooms, when that's done, you know, later, early this fall, those students will transition over from phase two to where it's indicated as phase one. When, you know, and they'll have the new art room, new restrooms, you name it. And all the primary grades will also have the A D A accessible restrooms within the classroom. Right now, they have that, those small ones that are in the corridor, you know, with that two-foot door that nobody can hit in. So all that's going away and they're also going to take advantage. Ms. Myers was was very amenable to relocating herself instead of moving from South Loop into the old admin area and then being kicked out of the admin area when we go to remodel it. She went ahead and she's moving her staff into work out of the library and the library building area. So they can start on that phase of construction and achieve the admin area sooner than later as opposed to pushing it off to almost next summer. So very progressive. New Hank's Middle School. So where we're at, this is a rendering of what you'll see as you're approaching the the front of the campus, you know, the bright red and grays to go with with the Hank's learning community. They do have still on schedule to to start construction in September. What you're looking at on the left is the existing Indian Ridge. And what you see in the middle is how the new campus is planned to lay out. So you can see the football field pretty much swaps because we're constructing while campus is still in session. You know, the athletic fields are swapping places. And you do see a softball and baseball field. So that's one thing that the existing campus doesn't have. So you have a softball and baseball field. It's kind of, you know, the the front of the building is towards the parking area, which you see in the middle of the diagram. And then the library is on the back end, so it's it's starting to take shape. And then this is just the layout of how the classroom wings layout. Your athletic facilities are on the upper portion. So the gyms end up being in this area, easy access for the locker rooms and restrooms for any events at baseball or softball fields. And now we're going back to the elementary school designs. So this was a layout to show how the site adapt of Thomas Manor, very similar to Thomas Manor, will adapt at Riverside. So you can see, this is the site of Cedar Grove on the left. The new parking would be essentially where the existing campus is. A lot of room for for green space. We're still modifying as a, we get the first estimate to either reduce some of that hard escaping and add more green space and also make the parking and whatnot a little more accessible. So right now, drop off and pickup would come, cafeteria is back here. So delivery trucks could come back here. Buses could enter here as, this would be main entry. This would be the back of the main entry, so you're near the cafeteria library. So drop off here or drop off here along the side road, access road would would be really convenient. So we're just looking at maybe if they swap some of the special ed areas for for better access. Scottsdale, same thing, you know, it's site adapt, it changes the front of the building. This on the far right of the graphic is is McCray. The architect is looking at a different option to maybe push the building towards the noon drive and away from Cosmos. You know, the neighbors on Cosmos don't like all the traffic in the mornings. So if we could reorient the building a little bit, we could probably relieve a lot of the traffic because on the noon drive to the south of the site, all the residential area, it's side yards or backyard. So it's not as disturbing and that, you know, there's not people getting in and out of their driveways in the morning for drop offs. So we're looking at an option to maybe reorient the front of the building and drop off to the noon side. Dolphin Terrace in right sizing Dolphin Terrace, the architect, this is the first stab at trying to accommodate both the new pre-K center with its own admin and the existing elementary school. After studying it multiple times, they went back to the drawing board to to show that maybe sharing the masked areas, your cafeteria and kitchens, well, separate cafeterias, but sharing the kitchen, but having very different entries and exits for for both campuses truly allow the Parkland pre-K to be a different campus. All of these, regardless of what you see here is our plan to have demo packages released in September. So we will have, you know, boots on the ground and earth moving in September. All three sites. As we move on to the HVAC upgrading life cycles, if you bear with me for these, I'll go through them quickly and at the end, give you the summary of where we're at per year. But this bid package nineteen oh one A, Sage and La Matera, Miss Vista, Del Valle High School. We're getting ready to bid in the the next two weeks, so they'll actually be starting in in July. The same with the second portion of of that nineteen oh one package with Pressa East Point, Edgemere, Eastwood Heights. So some of these schools, they have portions or majority may or may not be refrigerated air. So their their HVAC upgrades are to provide refrigerated air in their gyms or cafeterias or areas of the campus that weren't, for whatever reason, there may have been a classroom addition that didn't get refrigerated air at the time. We have nineteen oh two A and B, so Vista Hills, Ariel and Pebble Hills. These are more of the phase two projects, but we're they'll be starting in in January, construction will be starting in January of twenty twenty-one. So we're still slated to to start within, you know, thirteen months of the passage of the bond. So that that goes for Ramona, Sled and Passadale as well. As we get to Riverside C T E, again, this was a phase two project, but we're looking to push it forward to get these designs in. The construction community did see a lull. There was some, you know, all of a sudden, there was a stop in all commercial construction and everybody's hungry, so it's a good time for us to be out there bidding. So we'll have, you know, a good eight sites out in the next two weeks. Nineteen oh eight B, La Baron, Jared, I saw the jet air, same thing. These are, these are lesser, this is a phase two project and not some of the, you know, vertical construction. And nineteen oh nine B, Glencoe, Riverside, same thing, HVAC upgrades, cosmetic, you know, lifecycle replacement. Nineteen ten, so same thing, Real Bravo being the biggest one that needs the refrigerated air to get those. So in summarizing those, I just thought this graphic would 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 make it easier. So Lancaster, yes, will have all refrigerated air before school starts, before school starts. And during the course of next year, the sites that you see in twenty twenty-one and et cetera, et cetera. So La Baron, I failed to change it on the previous slide. La Baron's now the home of Alicia Chacon. So well, I guess stop calling it La Baron, but I guess for geographical purposes. And La Baron does have refrigerated air. At this time, it's the the upgrades to change out some of the older systems of that. And with that, I think that's, I'll take any questions.
There is no questions. Thank you.
President Atua, can we get a copy of that slide of that PowerPoint?
I think it just, I think it just got sent to you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Any other questions? If not. Okay, let's go up to number of questions for the internal audit. Audits regarding monthly audits, status report, the champagne.
Good evening, President Atua, Superintendent, all the board members and all the academy members. Hope everybody is well. Looks like you're all healthy and happy.
I do, I do have some questions for you. That you have been kind of under the same cloud that we all have. How are you managing to do your your work as far as audits and everything else and trying to develop another plan for next year? How are you managing?
What we do, I have a weekly staff meeting with my staff. So we spend time to communicate about what we need. And I also go through the audit process and the trainings with my staff to remind them about district structure and the audit procedures. And when we do, what we try to do is electronically, if we get records, we can get it from the system and we review from the system. If the schools have the records, what we do is we arrange, because school often have, goes back to campus. What we ask principal to do is arrange the way that we give him ahead of time, where he'll time of what we need. They pack it in the box and we go in front of the school, the guardian on duty, drop in our our trunk and we bring it back to office or to home and we review it. So we are keeping social distancing practice. We go, we wear masks, we wear gloves. So that's the way we handle so far. If we have to verify some existence of the assets, what we ask is teachers or the staff take picture of the equipment with a clear tag number that we can see. Now, some of the items, if it's on site, we'll have to put a disclaimer there that we will verify when we have to go back to campus. That's how we manage what we do now and we have been for since the COVID, our productivity has not decreased. And what I wanted you all to consider is that every year we present the audit, new audit plan in June, May, very crowded, very busy. So what I'd like to do is, considering Super has a new strategic plan, I would like to study the new strategic plan and I'm going to apply a new risk assessment process. I would like to have your support. Let me finish what we have now. We have, I counted, we have about thirty to forty projects that we should finish. And sixteen of them, it's new. This summer, we have the campus principal transitions. And I like to do it the way is in December, I will present the audit plan for twenty twenty-one that sits January to December. That way then I don't, that way then I have the information in May, in June, when finance is busy developing budget. We don't need to bother them about, give me the rough budget so I can do my analysis. If I do a calendar year that way, then it's much easier. It will go more smoother in terms of planning, in terms of interaction with the schools. in terms of getting full approval of the new projects. And this year, I'm really, really sure ended, I only have two staff with the secretary. So H I is helping that we're gonna have senior staff position interview this week. And of course, we will have to wait until we are going back either twenty five, fifty percent workforce back to the district and HR can do the trainings for the finalized recommendation. So I hope my new strategy and new plan can bring a better team and bring a better plan to serve everybody better.
So, so what I'm catching is that you're going to be on schedule as far as your work. It's not, it's just you're working on a plan to mitigate that, considering all those things that you just mentioned that you have to do.
Yes, we, because of the so many, so many reasons and that what I presented to you all in nineteen twenty audit year, that I do have a lot of them that I have not finished. And with the new audit have now, plus the pending ones, like you to let me finish it by December. And then the new one will start January one. For the next cycle, and I don't know if I can just give you the monthly, what I have been doing now? Or do we need to have a agenda item so next month I can present the pending one? The new proposal for you all to vote, this I would need some guidance.
Okay, well, I'll see what we can do about that.
Okay, okay. And I did on the last three weeks, I've been sending to everybody, do not buy the noise. Some of those were the professional developments. And last week I presented to you is how many project, forty forty one project we have accomplished. This is this so far this year, that either initial audit, initial audit plus correction, initial audit correction artists are completed, those are forty one projects we have done. And then I have a separate list of twenty two of them, plus another ten coming that I would like to be able to finish by December.
Okay, all right. Anybody else have any questions for champagne? Well, thank you. Right, that completes that part. Now, thank you, we will now move on to discuss the agenda items as listed in the posted notice. A regular meeting of his letter ISD Board of Trustees or June seventeen twenty twenty and related recommended motions with the superintendent and executive cabinet. And see responses to questions and or requests for additional information with the superintendent and preparation for deliberation and action after June seventeen twenty twenty, regular Board of Trustees. Instead of that, okay. Another items here is election of the board vice president. There will be possible action to fill vacancy in any board officer position. Next item would be elect officers for the YSD Public Facility Corporation PFC Board of Directors. Hey, now we move on to the consent items. That's the minutes of the Board of Trustees Board Workshop and Special Meeting Conference, May eleventh, twenty twenties at six P M. Number two, Board of Trustees Board meeting by video conference in May thirteen, twenty twenty six P M. Number three, the financial update for February, March and April twenty twenty. Number four, budget amendment requiring board approval. Number five, revision of twenty 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 one compensation plan for changes to central administrative organization. Number six, adoption of twenty 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 one student code of conduct. Number seven, pricing for full paying adults in the cafeterias. Number eight, request for T E A waiver for kindergarten reading assessment. Number nine, request for T E A waiver regarding early notice of risk of failure. Yes, sir, Mr. Ramirez. Did you have a question, Mr. Ramirez?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I was having pride, and I noticed Shane was having problems getting this, getting a question in earlier. He sent a note out to everybody. Can on number eight, number nine and number ten, can Dr. Latoya or one of the associates, please just, can you just briefly talk about those when we get to those or or at least start with eight?
Sorry, I'm trying to get. You said number eight?
Yes, sir.
Which one is eight? I'm sorry.
It's a request for T E A waivers for kindergarten reading assessment.
Brenda, do you want to discuss the details supporting that?
We can't. I'm going to tell you, I had to go down to the bottom left hand corner of the Zoom meeting where it says mute to unmute the thing. There you go.
There it is. I couldn't unmute myself or come up with my video. Mr. Ramirez, those are part of the reading academies in Houseville three, the early ed piece for reading literacy is that we adopt a kindergarten readiness assessment. All of Texas has to use the same reading kindergarten. It's called the text P I, short for Texas kindergarten assessment. And we decided to put a waiver in it. It is a face to face assessment. So what the commissioner did, because of our circumstances, you can go ahead and apply for the waiver for one more year. We'll continue progress monitoring our, our kindergartners for reading using ICE Station, but not the required Texas assessment due to that it has to be a face to face assessment.
The next, you know, you said, I'm sorry, Dr. Chacon, you said that the commissioner asked, encouraged us to apply for the waiver?
Right, so part of Houseville three, part of the reading goal is that, under the readiness standard for kindergarten, you have to adopt as a district, a Texas reading kindergarten reading assessment called the Texas Kia. However, it is a face to face, it's similar to Dibbles. Because of our circumstances, he did allow the districts to go ahead and take a one year waiver before implementing that assessment under that particular Houseville three mandate.
Okay.
We'll continue ICE Station and other measures as we always do, but it's not face to face assessment.
Thank you.
The next waiver, which is also four and seven, is usually for just similar to the fifth and eighth grade. They're fourth and seventh grade students that are at risk of not meeting the standards in fifth and eighth grade. We usually send out notice to parents. And he has also waived that requirement due to the fact that we did not have the data available to provide those parameters for the parents. So both of those are waivers from T A.
Okay, thank you very much.
I had questions for champagne during her report, I just wasn't able to keep my mic. So that all. Is it too late to ask champagne a couple of questions?
Shane, we're having a hard time understanding what you're saying.
Is it too late to ask champagne a couple of questions? I tried to unmute my mic, but it was, it was muted by the host.
Well, he's already somewhere. The champagne. Champagne?
Yes, sir.
Shane had a question for you. I'm sorry to bring you back, but.
Yes, I'm here.
My question was, in that last, I'll report you set us. And in talking about all the tests that we've, we've given you, your very first priority was getting an additional employee. Are you, are you short staffed right now? Is there, is there a deficiency in your, your audit team that needs to be filled? Said by June thirtieth, it's almost June thirtieth, has that been filled or are you good to go?
We, we were scheduled to have an interview for the senior position the week after spring break. But because of COVID nineteen, so it's been put on hold. And Mr. Latman has notified me today that he's gonna arrange the, actually, he's arranging the interview for this Thursday. So hopefully it will go smoothly and then, then we'll see, depends on when we go back to work. So HR can train the, the new employees. So, yes, I am sure handed.
May I add to that? I'm sorry, Mr. Ochoa, Mr. Hagerty, I have my double glasses on, excuse me. The reason that that we haven't hired that position as of yet for champagne isn't so much about HR being able to provide the training. It's for champagne to be able to do the hands on training necessary for an auditor in the school district, especially if they come from a non-school background. So we are hiring that position, but we cannot allow that person to start until champagne is going to have the capability to physically train them face to face.
So then how would that affect her ability to do the, the audits that she needs to do?
She still has her other staff at this point. She is only lacking one, one staff member. She still has the other three. And I believe she has a part timer as well. I, I'm not sure what that, why, with that regard, we are working with her, however, on hiring the one position that.
My part time student, this summer, she has a different internship in Atlanta city. So she, in the summer, she left in mid, let, latter part of the May. And she will come back when school started, end of August, she will come back. And she, she was a good employee. So I am behind and we will, I, I, I'm grateful Bobby's team is helping me. And I'm just hoping this can move forwards and we can get back to track.
What, one other thing that may have caused Mrs. She to be behind is when we were in the mixed into the, the strict closure by the city, we could not allow her and her team to have access to any records because no one was going on to district property. I don't know if that might have something with her being delayed in her, her audits, but that could definitely be a prevailing factor.
We walk around, we, everybody has to wait, we wait too, so.
Okay. Still there?
Yes.
No, Shane, Shane.
Oh.
I think he froze up again. All right, thank you, Miss Champagne. Let's move on. I think I was. Send request for T A waiver. Request for T A waiver applications for professional development in twenty nineteen twenty. Request number eleven, request for T A waiver regarding professional development in twenty 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 one. Number twelve, twenty twenty one instructional materials allotment and. Number thirteen, educational affiliation with the University of Texas of El Paso for teaching residency program. Number fourteen.
I'm sorry, Cruz?
Yes, sir.
I had a question on, on number thirteen. I'm, I'm thrilled that UTEP and their Department of Ed is deciding to, to, to come out to the district and and be part of it. I'm just curious, why did they elect to only go to one middle school? And, you know, and, and all our middle schools are excellent, but I just, I just find it interesting they selected to go to one and and not spread the wealth.
Kathy, Dr. Kennedy, are you with us?
Yes, sir, I sure am. Good evening, President Ochoa, members of the board, Dr. De La Torre. This is a pilot program right now with UTEP. So they only wanted to work with one middle school with the intent that in about two years, they will be able to offer services to the other middle schools and other campuses as well in terms of elementary and eventually high school. So we had an application process and we had several schools that applied. We had a committee that reviewed their application and Eastwood Middle rated was a top rated campus.
Okay, thank.
Thank you. Right, that was number fourteen, contract number two zero two zero zero one nine eight. Region seventeen, West Texas Food Service Cooperative. Number fifteen, contract number two zero two zero zero one seven two, communities and schools. Number sixteen, contract number two zero two zero zero two zero eight with El Paso County Juvenile Board. And that's pretty much incentive, we'll move on to the action items. Action items, one, adoption of the educational program. Number two, modifications of the twenty 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 one instructional calendar. Number three, job order contract solicitation, number two 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 one CSP, construction process and delegation of authority.
Mr. Ochoa, this is Connie Woodruff. I have a question on this one. What I'm wondering is, I don't have any problem with the actual process and, and the, the making the limit higher for us to allow superintendent to make these decisions. But I would like it if we could get some information from the, from the superintendent's office when these things happen. So that we know, I mean, it's a good thing for us to be able to know, people approaches and, and, and the, in the public. And they say, when is this starting or what is that doing? Or when it comes to these things and we can say, oh, I just heard about that, that's been approved. We're, we're moving forward with that or whatever. So I think even though we maybe assign this responsibility to the superintendent, I still think it would be great if we could get an update to know what things are, are, are being approved and what, what, what's on our plate, basically. So I, I guess it's not really a question, except can we do that?
Yeah, absolutely. Matter of fact, I think we sent out a B C today indicating that we spent money in three areas that exceeded fifty thousand dollars as a way to let you know any contract that we're entering into under the two thousand nineteen bond that is a result of that additional latitude I received during this time. Lily, did that go out today?
It did go out, I can insert for it did, because I read that one.
Oh.
Yes, ma'am, and yes, sir, it did go out and we will absolutely include that with any other acquisitions over fifty thousand is actually what we're reporting to the board.
Thank you, Ms. Woodruff, sleeper. Okay, let's see.
I have a couple of questions I want to.
Who, who, who?
Shane.
Oh, okay, Shane, we can hear you.
I'm trying to understand why, why do we need to? The threshold right now is at half million when it used to be, I understand about a hundred thousand. We're looking at giving latitude to the superintendent to spend three million dollars without coming to the board first, is that correct?
To understand that.
I didn't hear what Shane said.
I'm sorry, let me try to speak up. Are, are we giving latitude to the superintendent to be able to discretionary spend three million dollars in any twenty nineteen bond project without coming to the board first?
Yes, sir. So what we are doing right now with this particular job order contract, we have a large solicitation on the streets right now asking for bids for a variety of trades. So some of. So some of the things we're looking for are parking lot paving or glazing, glass replacement across the district. And so we have these outstanding right now. They are act- it's actually out on the streets and we are receiving proposals for it. It may have actually closed by now or it wouldn't be here. But what we're asking for is that after we've competitively acquired all of these responses from the various vendors that are qualified to perform these trades, we're asking that the superintendent be able to select one that is qualified and able to do a large project and then report back to you that of the qualified bidders on a particular job order, we have selected this one because they have the qualifications and they're available to do the work and their pricing is fair, we would like to move forward. And then we report back to you that we have done so. But it is all competitively bid, it's all budgeted. So he doesn't have the discretionary authority is merely to select from all of the bidders who have responded and are qualified.
Are we still going to have that committee that goes and oversees these different vendors and different?
Are you asking about a bond advisory oversight committee or are you asking about evaluation committees?
Evaluation committee for.
Absolutely.
And then the board doesn't look at any of these. We just go for it, go spend those $3 million we trust.
So we have, we have to comply with state and federal law regardless of what we're bidding, which we are obviously doing. And then we are comprising a list of qualified vendors that respond to this solicitation. So they have to be interested in working with us. And then he has the authority up to that cap to award, say, concrete or paving at Del Valle High School parking lot, which is a great example of one that we're looking at right now under this job order contract. But you'll see then there's a next item on the agenda, I believe, number four is one of the bond projects for Capistrano. So you're going to continue seeing this. The job order contract is a unique type of vehicle for acquiring oddball services. So concrete paving is our, parking lot paving is not something that most CSP bidders, in fact, we had a hard time getting someone to bid on it in the past when we've done it. This way, we're hoping to accumulate several vendors who are qualified and then we can select among them and use them for these kind of projects. But you'll still see that.
My question would be, why are we removing one of the checks and balances we have in place at the $203 million? And giving that latitude to the superintendent? Is it to the superintendent or is it to superintendent's designee?
It's to the superintendent and his designee and the board that you're sitting on that latitude because during the summer and it in in the middle of a 19 virus, waiting for the ability to get together and meet means meeting. So we're being absolutely transparent and providing the board with all of the information. I think the last thing you want to do is have board members deciding who we should give contracts to.
But we do decide, we we look at all the.
No, you don't.
Committee reviews, all the recommendations, but there were lots of make that final decision. They say, yes, we're going to go with this company or no, we're not going to go with.
Support the administration. But we're the ones that go through the procurement process. Board members don't sit on the panel, they don't evaluate, they consider the recommendation.
If they're.
The recommendation. I'm sorry?
And then make that decision.
And then and then decide yes or no to support the recommendation, yes.
Right. So again, only because it's such a lonesome of money, why, why would we choose to do this?
Probably because we delivered a 2015 bond on time, under budget, great quality and all things being equal, most of the work went well.
Okay, but that was done with the board.
That was. But the recommendation still came from administration. We'll do it any way you want.
Guys, as I understand though, we already have a, we've given the latitude of the 500,000 or below. We're increasing it for these projects that are a little quirky in the sense that you you don't always get a bidder for a smaller parking lot type of project. But that doesn't mean that that Dr. La Torre is going to just, I I believe that we've built up that trust. We do receive reports, maybe I would like to recommend kind of in line with Connie that we get something each month in it like an Excel spreadsheet for him, just like I I think maybe some of the, some of the the discomfort that, and I'm going to assume I'm saying that you might be having is we don't necessarily know who is, and and not that we make a decision because we don't legally, we have no, no, no hold there and nor do we want it, but just to see who did apply, who got the award and stuff like that, because we do get questions and it is good to have that information so we know and we had it before and and it's 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 okay to continue to have that information so we have that close relationship as we're going about making these decisions. We have the information at hand as we're as we're going about the process of this bond. We want to be inclusive and understand all.
Not a problem. And I agree.
Yeah, one of the things I understood from this also was that it expedites the work because of all the competition within the city, all the construction that's going on. We have to have that that leeway and and right, Ms. Lindley, that we have to to act on that as soon as possible. If not, we might fall behind and be put placed later on in their in their list as to how they're going to accomplish this. So we can get them right on and sign them on. We can get things done on time, under budget sometimes or within budget and have like, like, like Catherine says, we have developed that trust between the board and Dr. De La Torre and his staff. So not as well as been one of our of our big. Here is that we have that trust. So that's why have we been doing that, Shane?
I feel there's a difference between trust and verification and for us to not to give up that ability to have our due diligence, I don't see where that is. I don't see how we're doing our constituents a favor by allowing that that latitude to be placed on one person where that person's designee as opposed to a board of seven that they've elected to represent them.
Shane, let me ask you a question. When you were on the board and and now that you, when you made the decisions with the prior bond, did you make, were any of those, did you ever vote not in favor of what the staff recommended regarding the contract specific to construction?
That's a good question. I don't know.
Mr. Ochoa, if I may.
Who is, who is asking?
Lindley.
Okay.
So to confirm what you just mentioned, you are absolutely correct. Many entities take a long while to bid and award projects. And I mentioned earlier that we were specifically looking at the Del Valle High School parking lot. And that solicitation, the large jock is closed, has closed and we evaluate on Monday. If I wait till the next July meeting for award of this, I can't get that contractor in there in 10 days, which I can do if I have delegated authority. I can get someone started as soon as design is finished. And so I'm simultaneously running design and getting ready to let this jock so that we can actually move on the Del Valle parking lot during the summer and hopefully get 85% of it accomplished before students return and with a potential August 3rd date, it's really important. So that's a large reason of why we're asking for authority on the jock. If you don't want to do that, I I don't know if there's an alternative, Susan, for how we might be able to address the Del Valle parking lot, which falls under this, and how we might revise the threshold going forward if there's, if that might potentially solve the problem.
Mr. Ochoa, may I explain a little bit about this item?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Austin.
Um, I will certainly look at that question, Ms. Sleeper. But a jock contract, if you all will look at this, at this motion and this item, a jock contract is a very specific kind of construction work. It it's really for trades, maintenance, repeat types of jobs. It is for, it is not for building a whole school. It's for doing a certain narrow type of work that gets done over and over again. So that, for example, we, the the $3 million was, is is viewed as a, as a limit because some of these jobs may be very expensive, like because of the nature of the equipment, like HVAC. Some of those pieces are expensive. But the nature of the work is really the more repeat routine work that gets done all the time at schools. And that will apply regardless of the amount. So we always look at the nature of the work and we're not going to award any contract under here unless it falls within this definition that is exactly there in the statute for repair, maintenance, minor construction, routine recurring. So it's not, we, we still come to you when we build a whole new school or something like that, that comes to you with our regular threshold. These are small jobs in a big contract for the most part.
So then how many small jobs equate to $3 million? How often does a small job cost $3 million?
I I don't know that it would do it very often at all, but it could be that two large roofs or three large HVACs could be getting close to $3 million, Ms. Sleeper.
Or or Del Valle's parking lot could easily get to that threshold, two and a half, anywhere in that neighborhood.
But the work is not complex necessarily.
It's repave.
And in fact, the, the way these things are bid is they're pre-priced. It's based on a unit cost with a coefficient and we all know the price going in. So it's not like you, they bid it out for all these, like we do with contractors and subcontractors. So it's something that we can actually look up in the RS means book and see what it's going to cost beforehand.
Thank you, Ms. Austin, Ms. Sleeper.
I think Mr. Rosales has been waiting to ask a question.
Well, I I don't necessarily want to make this thing longer. Shane, it's it's a good point. And and I understand, I think, where you're coming from. The, the, the comment about the schedules such as Adrian provided, I think would be a real plus for us as we come across the the people in our district where we have a good, a good idea as to when projects are being either entered or being completed, et cetera, et cetera. If we could get this at least once a month, I think that would be great. I I really do. The, the amount of money, for example, in this particular $3 million, I'm personally, I'm not in favor of just arbitrarily opening up $3 million. However, when you look at the $431 million projects that we completed, thanks to the leadership of this, of the administration, there, there's got to be some leeway and we, there's got to be some mutual trust. And I think this is where, this is where I feel the mutual trust is coming. But I do feel that we should get an update. It was very nice to see all that that L K has presented to us and I would, I'm asking, President Ochoa, if you would provide or have them provide a list of projects that they're going in once a month or once a quarter, that'd be great. It puts everybody on, it puts everybody on a, on an annoying point of view. If anyone asks you any questions, let me check on this. This is where we're at, this, this, how much it costs, or who did it? Well, this is, this is the builder, this is the architect.
Hey.
Good communication.
Hey. Mr. Bustillos.
Um, I I see where Shane's coming with this too, Mr. Hagerty. And and also, I don't know if anybody's tried to hire a contractor lately. It seems like with the COVID situation, it seems like contractors are definitely hard to get anywhere. Being in the business, they are, they are booked. So I know when it comes time to do a, a project, how timely it is to be able to get the money and get going on that. So I can see that, I would support that. But also, like Mr. Rosales and and everybody else has said, we would like, I would like to see more, you know, more reports of what's coming up and how it's, you know, what we're going with it so that way we can keep our, our community abreast of all the projects that are coming out and letting them know where this money's going. So, thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Bustillos. All right. Let's move on to number four. Quarter phase one solicitation. Bond or, no, bond 2019 RFP 519098 Capistrano, elementary HVAC and associated upgrades. All right, that completes that. I think we're going to move into executive. The board of trustees has determined, closed meeting of the board of trustees is required to allow our attorneys to provide full advice regarding the item on the modified school calendar. Such meeting is authorized by the Texas Open Meeting Sac, Texas Government Code, Section 551 dash 001, including but not limited to the sections and purposes covered by the following section of the Texas Government Code, 551 dash, I mean, 071, 72, 73, 74, 76, 82, 127, 821, 83, and 84. Final action decision or vote be required with regard to any matter considered in closed session. The final action decision or vote shall be in the open meeting or at a subsequent public meeting with notice. The board will not go into closed session and accept conference call at 8:10 PM. The board will not go into closed session and accept conference call at eight, ten P M.
nine PM?
beep beep beep.
you have nothing else on the agenda? can we close up without Mr Rosales?
are you okay? do we close?
I believe we can. I, I, we will reflect in the minutes that he didn't come. that, that he's not president in the meeting.
yeah, it's probably technical or, you know, so, uh, do I have motion to adjourn?
so moved.
yes, motion to adjourn, adjourn.
bye guys.
any questions?